Thank you very much for coming today. Thank you for coming. We're here to discuss the proposed Community Preservation Act for Lakeville, Massachusetts. The reason why is because residents of Lakeville through the years have consistently and repeatedly expressed a wish to preserve our community and its rural character. The Community Preservation Act is a way that we can create a steady funding source for preserving and improving our community's character and our quality of life. A little bit about the CPA. You can read more on the communitypreservationcoalition.org page. The CPA Act brings communities together. It improves our property values, it improves our life, and it improves our health. It's a smart growth tool that helps us preserve open space and historic sites, create affordable housing, and develop outdoor recreational facilities. It also helps strengthen our economy and construction jobs, our workforce, and supports the tourism industry through preservation of the Commonwealth's historic and natural resources, something we have a lot of in Lakeville. The state will match the funds. We can also leverage the funds, which has been a huge success for CPA communities. All of the funds are controlled locally by town vote. You get to vote on the projects that are approved. It's a way for us to bring in outside funding and dollar matching programs while retaining local control. It is one of the most fundamental American democratic ways that people can be involved in their community. So far CPA has leveraged more than $712 million in additional funds. Some examples, if you look up here, show you where we start with the CPA fund and how that money is leveraged. So for instance, Peabody's Rail Trail used $162,000 in CPA funds and brought in $1.36 million with a federal grant. It's a steady source of funding for local CPA needs. It makes local projects affordable. It leverages other state, federal, and private funding. It strengthens our financial outlook. It creates economic activity and jobs. A great example recently, Hanover, Mass. funded a recreational park 100 percent with CPA funds. This park hosts three baseball diamonds, three softball diamonds, two multi-use fields, a tournament-sized soccer field, and over a mile of walking trails that wind through a picnic area, ponds, wetlands, and gardens. Some of you may be familiar with one of our projects in Lakeville, the Vigorous Conservation Center Improvements Project, which we've been working on for a few years now. We have a handful of volunteers that have given their own time and money. Residents have generously made donations, but this project falls on the shoulder of a few people. In 2018, this project could benefit from CPA. This project is what drove me to bring the CPA article to Lakeville today. There are many other ideas for Lakeville. I'm sure you have some you could bring to us as well. There are desperate needs for historical archiving, keeping up important buildings like our town hall or old town hall. If the Peach D Barn could only get electricity, we could bring in all sorts of activities that would open it up for events. We have ideas for green spaces in the town center, strengthening our town center, developing our community, making it more walkable. Then, think about Forge Park. We have our own recreational feat, Ted Williams Camp. Our fields and our bathrooms at John Pond Park could benefit. If we were to bring in ideas like boardwalks and bike walks, this would benefit our local businesses enormously. The cost to the average Lakeville taxpayer, according to our regional assessor Harold Shield, the average single-family home evaluation in 2016 is $304,000. We take $100,000 off as an exemption for the CPA Act for all residents and all businesses. That brings us down to $204,000 for the average homeowner. Multiply that by the current tax rate, which is $14.13 for every thousand dollars. So that brings us to $2,882.52. Times our proposed CPA rate of 1 percent, the lowest possible percentage, brings us to a cost of $28.83 per year for the average single-family home in Lakeville, less than a cup of coffee a day. Residents that qualify for elderly or low-income housing are exempt. We hope that you will be excited about this program and the prospects that it brings to us, and sign up to get updates or help with the CPA campaign, and that you will vote June 4th for it. I'm going to welcome now some visitors from outside of Lakeville. We have Mark Russo here to my right, left. He is the chair of the Plumbton Community Preservation Committee. And next to him is Rick Burnett of the Plumbton Agricultural Commission and the Plumbton Community Preservation Committee. And Jo Ruthwitz, who has been incredibly helpful, providing information to us on how we can accomplish this in Lakeville. She is with the Middleborough Housing Authority and the Community Preservation Act Committee in Middleborough. Thank you so much for coming today. And I'm just going to open up the floor to them. And if you have any questions that you would like to direct to them, please do sign up at the Lakeville Library Bulletin Board, leave your name and contact information, and we will try to answer your questions. Thank you for your time.
You can go.
I'm gonna go? Well, I was involved in Plumbton's effort to pass CPC, which we did. I was coming at that from a land perspective. I like to call myself a land guy. I'm interested in saving land. Not everybody's interested in that. Some have housing people, historic. So that's where I got my start from. I'm a builder. I don't build new homes, but I also farm. So I'm interested in trying to keep some of our ag land preserved. So that was my driving force. Because we lose it, you know, you lose a house lot here and a house lot there. So to move forward, we passed it and started moving forward. We're at 1.5 percent is our assessment. So everything was a compromise. I wanted three, back and forth. We ended up 1.5. It passed. It's working just fine. So we move along and we have, I don't want to get too involved in it, but we're doing a land project. So we have a town parcel that's landlocked. And then the short of it, we're able to buy 10 acres, you know, and we really leveraged it hard. And I'll let Mark fill in some of the details. He's good at that. So we connected these two pieces of property together, and we built a boardwalk. We did some other things. And one of the things I was really hoping would happen in town is, an adjoining piece of property, someone found out about, you know, what we're doing, and they said, geez, I'd kind of like to add this to it. And then we were able to help them with CPA funds to donate it to the town, but get some state money from it. It didn't cost us any, and then we just added another 16 acres of beautiful trails and ponds to our park. And then there's some other land on the other side that we'll be coming along. And through all this, we're making more people aware of being able to do these things in town, and that either you're a landowner that wants to donate outright, or maybe you have a piece that would be a nice adjoining piece, and the state could have some money for that as well. So I just see it bringing more awareness of the land, open space, and the usage of it to people. And we have, you know, open space committee, and we have the map of the town there, and we have our parks on it and other town parcels. And we start looking at, how could we do a trail system, a loop around the town? So we're working on that now with, you know, to get some rights of ways and other methods and land bought. So it's a long process. It's been very rewarding. You always have your difficult times, but overall, very small amount of money on my personal tax bill for the benefits that we get. It's been great. This last project that we did just brought the town together, or an enormous amount of people together to volunteer to help with the building of this boardwalk, from little tiny kids to Eagle Scouts, now doing Eagle projects on this particular project. Just really brought a lot of people together that had never met before, you know? They saw it advertised, and down they came, and they carried planks and whatever they could do, nailed some planks. That particular part of it is what I'm interested in. Of course, we help with all the other projects that we have to do because I sit on the board, but I have a keen interest. I'm always looking for that land connection. So that's how I really got tied into this.
Yes. Thank you.
So I'll address a couple of things, maybe a little bit the why of CPA, and then a little bit the how of getting it implemented. I've been on the Community Preservation Committee since its inception eight years ago. I think it is by far the best committee in town. It's by far the best job in town. We actually have some money. People come to us with neat projects. We help them make them even better. And then we help get them passed. And I think one of the real pleasures of having CPA in Plumbton is we can drive around town and see project after project that we put together. We have renovated a swim hall in town. We fixed up the field of a park in town. We put in a chairlift in the historic building where the Council on Aging is, so people can get upstairs. We fixed the dampness in the library. Just very useful projects along the way. I think one of the cool things of Community Preservation Act, there are four major areas of spending: open space preservation, historic preservation, recreational land, and community housing. The interesting thing, I think, about CPA is the name says it all, community preservation. And those kinds of activities are sort of quality-of-life activities, quality-of-life projects that might not get done otherwise. And so it's just a beautiful thing to have on hand. As Rick mentioned, our premier project over the last few years has been putting together these parks. And essentially, because we had CPA Act approved, we were able to make 125-acre park for the net cost to the town of $25,000. I mean, all around the state, people are putting together 125-acre parks for $1 million, $2 million, $3 million. And I think one of the reasons we've been so successful is we have been incredibly careful about finding the most cost-effective projects, using a lot of volunteer labor along the way, and looking for partnerships. So this becomes seed money for all of that. In terms of getting the thing passed, I've been thinking about this a lot today because we're dealing in Plumbton with several citizen petitions that could be a challenge to the way government's done. So a lot of conversation about that, and a lot of conversation about how to get things passed at town meeting. And I think it's unbelievably simple. It comes down to two simple things: educating the public and getting the turnout to get it done. The cool thing about CPA is I think if the facts get out there about educating the public, it's pretty much a no-brainer. The amount of money involved, particularly at 1 percent, is so small. Certainly, I think Lakeville may be a little bit like Plumbton, that we have a fair amount of people of very modest means, and of course, everyone's very concerned about taxes these days. One of the beautiful things about the way the CPA was written, as you all are planning to do, you can exempt the first $100,000 of value. Lower-income people can be exempted from the whole thing. This is just plain not a threat to people of modest means. In fact, I think it's just the reverse. I mean, the things we've done in Plumbton, chairlifts for the Council on Aging, fixing their windows, creating parks and passive recreation that just wouldn't be there otherwise, for people of modest means, that's very much to their benefit. So in terms of educating, I think the thing we learned along the way, it's a fairly common saw or axiom, but I think the key, the absolute key, is to keep it simple. And getting across to people the benefits of this in three points or less, I think is absolutely essential. It is awfully easy to get caught up in all the details. People get lost in that. I think we had great luck in getting our CPA passed and kind of prostheticizing, continually to prostetize about its benefits, is reminding people the big impact for projects, how affordable it is. The biggie is the state match. The state match of money raised varies from year to year, but it's 20 to 50 percent. And to not take advantage of that is pretty much insane, as far as I can see. We have done things along the way with lots of literature, and I've brought along the literature we brought today. One of my favorites is, one of them is this one-pager that lets people know how they can be exempt from this if they need be. I love this one from another town that says, "Vote yes, and in voting yes, we protect precious open space, we create affordable housing, and we preserve our historic reefs." In any event, I will leave all this stuff. I think it's all about educating the public. This one seems like the biggest, I admit I'm a little prejudiced on this, but I think this is the biggest no-brainer going. The other thing I know is the brochures. We did a mailing along the way, lots of pictures, lots of people, a few facts, and I think that was very helpful in making this happen. And maybe I should shut up and share the speaking time.
I agree with both of you. Education is important, and I think once we got it passed, you are just so excited about all the projects. And in Middleborough, it did take us three times to pass. We started in 2002. I think the second one was in 2006, and it was passed in 2010. Where essentially, when we passed it, was essentially the same thing, 100,000 exemption and the 1 percent. And I think at that time, we were anticipating about $30 so per household for increase for the CPA. It did pass, and we have done almost with FY '17, which we just passed at town meeting on Monday, will be over $1.7 million in projects. And it has been just fabulous. One thing the committee is doing is saying, we don't want 100 percent of the money coming from CPA. We want matches. Some of the matching money that we have received, one from Monday night, we received a FEMA grant of over $1 million, and the town had to put in 12 percent. So, you know, it's a little over $100,000, and we get $1 million. And that is purchasing 14 acres that is around the perchade in the Masquet River, and it is abutting over 100 acres of other public land. By the state and Nature Conservancy owns some land. So it's a big open space. Another project, at the Housing Authority, we tend to go for the 10 percent. You have to have 10 percent in each bucket of the open space housing in historic. And we go for the 10 percent, which is about $20,000. But that $20,000, the first year I got it, leveraged 1.2, almost $1.3 million in grants from the Department of Housing and Community Development in mass housing to preserve our existing elderly housing in town. So that was huge. Another housing project failed to get matching grants because they didn't have, as the state put it, any skin in the game for the town. And CPA put in $40,000, and it's over, almost a $9 million project. And that is going to be 100 percent affordable housing. So with that project, it is almost bringing Middleborough to 10.40B. So that is huge as far as the town is concerned. You know, when we passed it, everybody in town knew that housing was not the main focus. That's my job, my day job, but, you know, that's okay. The main reasons were the open space in the historic preservation. And that's what we have been doing. We do the 10 percent on the housing, and the remainder of the 90 percent is going to historic preservation in open space. And it's just been great. You would mention some of your projects. I might as well mention some of ours. The big one has been the Oliver Estate. That is 1700s building that the town purchased last year. This house was built by Judge Oliver for his son back in the 1700s, and they were Tories and the, they were for the English, obviously. And they were run out of this country, and the house survived. And it is in great shape, and, you know, Daniel Webster slept there, George Washington slept there, Abigail Adams slept there, you know? So you have all the historic, but it looks like it did back in the 1700s. So we're hoping to preserve that. We've done a lot of open space. We've purchased several properties and have conservation restrictions on them. Another project was the Middleborough Historic Museum for the Tom Thumb exhibit, and we did climate controls to preserve Mrs. Tom Thumb's dresses. She has a couple of dresses there. And that is allowing the museum to be open more, and they can go for more grants. We did just have town meeting on Monday night, and we had four projects, and all of them passed. Just going into town meeting, what we're saying is education. So we do a lot of information, articles in the newspaper, to try and make sure people are aware. Our meetings are televised also. So we do have visitors sometimes asking questions if this is appropriate, or is there another way to do it, or other grant funds. It is important to have an open discussion, and education is the key component here.
Thank you. Thank you. I wonder if there are any questions from anybody or the panels. Would you mind coming up to the podium, Linda? Thank you.
You might explain how the Community Preservation Committee was formed. Okay. I did.
Sure. So there's four at large, and four representatives from different boards. Conservation Commission, which I am the representative to CPC board. Housing.
Planning.
Planning and town highways, well, our highway surveyor or Parks Department person, depends on how big.
We have five, you'll miss it. We have planning, conservation, historic, housing, and parks.
I understand it's nine?
Yeah.
Five from town committees, including the ones you mentioned plus historical, I think?
Historical, yes.
Yeah, historic, yep.
And four members at large.
And four members. Which would be appointed by the selectmen.
Selectmen, yeah. The statutory members, so the planning and conservation, they are appointed by their commission agency, and then it's a joint appointment.
You basically serve as a committee for people to bring ideas to you. You review them, and then decide what goes to the selectmen to another board, or?
No. Or goes to the selectmen to be put on the line for town meeting to approve.
In our town, it's, we also go before the FinCom. We actually have a member of the FinCom come to the meetings to make sure there's no overlap, that CPA isn't maybe funding a project for another town department, and they're also asking for the money from the town budget. So we try to work with them.
Thank you.
Please, I'll just elaborate maybe a little bit more. You know, we are the board, but the projects come from the town, from people, other town boards, but they, you know, anybody can bring a project forward to the committee. And on our particular board, we, you know, we accept them all, and we review them several times. We've sent them away, saying, you need to do a little bit more work, or even expand the project, you know, to encompass a little bit more, you know, give them some pointers, what we think, and then they'll come back with it, you know? And either they can make it in time for that year's submittal, or they've even come back a year later when they've expanded the project and really done, you know, the projects have come out better. So we're, you know, we're there to help them, and it's not just a big rubber stamp, yes or no. You know, we kind of try to help everybody.
And just to elaborate on that even more, I think frequently CPA projects, because the committee continues to monitor the project as it goes along, and because the committee, at least in our town, we foster a huge paranoia that we are going to get these projects exactly right, that we're going to spiff them up, make beautiful projects to begin with, and just have tremendous oversight. I mean, we understand that people are concerned about their tax dollar. We understand that CPA could be abolished, so we work unbelievably hard to get really good projects done well. And I think, at least in our town, those projects get more oversight or more carefully done. And I actually think the committee, half the job of the committee is certainly to vet these projects and then help bring them to completion. And the other half of the work of our committee is to protect the Act and continue to encourage the town to understand what a great deal it is. One other thing I'd just like to mention is, I think some towns, and I think this happened to us when we started, I mean, there's that feeling of like, well, we don't know how to do this, and what kind of help we are going to get. I think we didn't fully recognize the incredible power and help of the Community Preservation Coalition, which is a nonprofit organization that you have been talking to. They are an unbelievable resource. No matter what question comes up, the executive director and the associate executive director are right there. are right there, either knowing the answers or knowing how to find the answers. It's an amazing resource to help us get all of this just right.
And all of the debate and negotiations take place in public meetings? So everything is?
All public meetings, yeah. And as you go through the process, you know, we have our, we have our board meetings and, you know, the projects come to us. And then you also have a format that you have to go through. It has to, you know, be submitted to all the other town boards. And then we actually hold a public meeting to, you know, advertise, just like, just like any other public meeting, that, to tell people that this is what's happening and this project is put before us and come and they can bring their input. And then typically we have our final vote on the project after, after that input. And then it goes to the selectmen and to town meeting. So it's such an open process.
And the goal there is really that people fully, completely understand this or have the opportunity to understand it ahead of time. And actually it's for us to fully and completely have the opportunity to hear what the objections are.
Question from Middleborough. There was one particular petitioner that got rejected, the disc golf course. And can you talk about why that was rejected? Because it's a recreational facility. Was there, were there some issues with ownership of land and who run, who controlled that land?
Yeah. There, this was the disc golf at the Weston Forest. The Weston Forest Committee thought they had full control of what could be done on that property and they approved the project. So when we have a project come to us, we want to make sure the appropriate oversight, in this case Weston Forest, had approved it. And the Weston Forest Committee and the park department had both approved the project. When it went to town meeting, it was, there was questions as to who had oversight of the Weston Forest. So it has since been determined that the selectmen have oversight of the Weston Forest and not the Weston Forest Committee. They can approve certain things, but ultimately it is the selectmen. So that, you know, unfortunately, that was a fantastic project. And I think that we could have done a better job assisting the applicant at town meeting. But bottom line, we were totally unaware. I think if the Weston Forest Committee didn't know what they could do and couldn't do, we wouldn't have known. But yeah, that was unfortunate. It was a great project.
Elaborate a little bit. We have, we have this little handout that we've used from day one when projects come to us to determine eligibility. It's a pretty, pretty basic thing and the recreational projects can be a little bit tricky. If the land.
That's basically the same thing as the coalition.
Yeah, this is from the coalition. So if the land, if the land wasn't bought with CPA funds, you can't, you can't put recreation on it, I believe. There's, unless they change that.
I think they changed.
It's in, they changed that in the past couple of years. That's how it started out. So some of that recreation stuff is a little difficult. Because some, like the cities, they, they're not going to be doing a lot of open space projects, but they sure could do some recreational projects, you know, some park stuff or, so they had to, they switched that up a little bit.
The first question that comes up in any project that becomes before CPC is, does it qualify in one of the four categories? Lots of times it's black and white. There is the big gray area where trouble can come up. And that's where Community Preservation Coalition is so helpful because they've been through it and they can nip it in the bud if it looks like it's a project that's going to be questionable.
And we do a two-step application process. And the first one is basically, is it eligible? What kind of money are you looking for? We ask for what is the CPA percentage of the total project? And, you know, we do a lot of vetting and that's where we say, go back and do this or apply for other funds. No, it doesn't qualify as it is. You're going to have to do more work. Once we vote to say, yes, it is approved for step one, then you can come back for a step two application. And that is many pages and we want a lot of detail. And we're still going to grill you on everything. And one thing I do want to say is, as Plimpton said, it isn't a rubber stamp. We don't, everything that comes in, we have two members on the committee that voted against CPA when it was approved, but they still wanted to be on the committee. They're statutory members, but they chose to be on the CPA committee. And they, you know, it's a balancing act. And it's great because we get a lot of questions from those members. But I think we've been together for five years. It's been some ins and outs as committees change. But I think we have a good relationship, all of us. And we know what one person is going to be looking at. So we're, we're all on the same page. We want to make sure it isn't 100 percent CPA funded. And it is the benefit, that it's going to be benefit and at town meeting. We can stand up and be comfortable saying to all residents in town that this is a good project. We just don't want to, you know, have something that is going to be shot down at town meeting.
I think there's a lot of evidence that shows it's working in Middleborough. And I've heard from residents of Middleborough how happy they are with it. And as a neighbor to Middleborough, I can see the impact that it's having. So congratulations. And I can see the passion that's coming from the other communities and what you've said tonight. What strikes me so deeply is the commitment and support that's coming from the coalition and how much they want to help our communities. It's hard to be here in this position. I, like many people in my community, my community, I don't want more taxes. I want smaller governments. I fight for local control tooth and nail. And I had to go through a very long process to get to the point where I felt that I really could do this with help from people around us and that I felt that I really could authentically put this forward as the best possible idea for Lakeville. And when I see you realizing your potential in your towns and I listen to our town people talk about what they want to see in our town of Lakeville and how we have this unrealized potential, that there is so much here that we could unleash if we just had a little boost, if we had that seed money, if we had that support. And I think this is an incredible opportunity. I hope it happens this time. I have no doubt that this is going to happen here someday. I just hope it happens now. Because I've seen how long projects can take. I've watched, as my husband calls it, geologic time. We've watched things move on geologic time. And I don't want to sit around and wait for projects to take 10 and 15 and 20 years when they can be done in two. And I'll just say, my neighbor's house just went up in a week. 7,000 pounds came down our road on top of a truck. And with smart thinking and pre-planning, the whole house went up in a week. It blew me away. And I'm watching this happen with the CPA on big projects, projects that could work in Lakeville, in towns that are like Lakeville, with people like, people that live in Lakeville. And of course, there's going to be some fear and the unknown. But now is the time to bring that out. You know, the fact that we don't have a lot of people here with lots of questions and concerns is sad. But I understand that it's hard for people to get out to meetings, so hopefully everyone will watch this tape and continue to ask questions. Hopefully people will air their concerns before the town meeting, before the vote. That's been encouraged. We want people to bring concerns forward. I read the paper today. I heard the concerns. I will find those people and we will talk. And if you haven't come forward yet and you're at home watching this and you have concerns, please come out and talk now. Because we don't want to wait another two, three, five years to come back here and try to do this again. We want this to happen now and get the work done. Let's get the work done while we can, while we're hot, while, before something else happens. Because I've been saying that since I moved here. If we don't take control of our community, other things will. We will not be in control. We need to make the decisions, not have the decisions made for us. So this is a great way. And I thank you so much for taking your time out to come help our, our community do this. And I hope somebody did the same for you because it's invaluable to us. You're right, it is a very complicated program to understand. So I don't blame people for having lots of questions.
I know that one of the criticisms of CPA is.
Oh, Joe, could you come up to the podium, would you mind? Thank you.
I know that one of the criticisms of CPA is you don't really know from year to year the availability and amount of the funds in, coming from other sources, namely the state. And then I hear two stories. You hear, oh, no, there's no problem. There'll be plenty of funds available. But then you hear sometimes, well, no, there can be, you know, a significant shortage. So now people are paying into a CPA that they can't really use that much because they don't really have, you know, the leverage of getting the matching funds. What do you know about that?
Well, the match is, the match is flexible depending on the funds that are available from the state. I think we're at 19 percent.
That's the minimum because they're expecting additional funds.
Right. So you know what you're getting from your, the town, what your town assessment's going to be. And then till they, till they finally set that number, then you'll know what's coming from the state. But it does, it is flexible. When they first implemented this, the first towns that went in were getting 100 percent.
50 percent.
If they had the 3 percent.
If they had the 3 percent. Or you rephrase that, they were getting their match because it was money in the fund. And the assessment is from, the money comes from an assessment that's on a fee at the registration. So back in the building boom, there was lots of, lots of stuff going on at the registry of deeds. So there was lots of money being put into the fund.
And of course, as more communities.
And it's coming back again.
As more communities.
Exactly.
Walk in as a more of a draw on those funds.
There is. And, and a piece of something's better than nothing at all. So it's the way we look at it. But also, as we've heard here tonight, being able to leverage what little pieces that you have is great. Otherwise, you know, for years, we were sitting looking at, at farms being chewed up by developers that could have been bought and done some great projects, you know, and just different, you know, different things all across the state.
We say that we know what we're getting every year from the tax, the local tax assessment, in the amount we're getting from the state, 19, 20, 50 percent, whatever it is. I don't know about you, but I do know me personally, I don't get 19 percent on my savings account. I don't get 25 percent. I don't get 50 percent. So the fact that we're getting 19 percent this year, which will be more, is less than it was before. It's still probably 18 and a half percent more than what you're getting anyplace else. So it's a good return on your investment. And the other thing is the towns don't have a lot of money to play, pay for projects that aren't a priority.
Absolutely.
And this lets you do projects that you wouldn't have money for. The very first project that Middleborough did was for the town clerk to preserve the town records. And Middleborough goes back to 16th or 1660, 1669, but we have records going back farther. So, you know, she wanted to put in climate control and digital ties and just get the records in order. And that's the very first project that we did. And it's been great. Not all of our projects have been town projects. There have been maybe three that haven't been. They're by private entities, but, but still, it's improving the town as a whole.
We did the same, we did the exact same thing. Our first project and our biggest project to date was a safe for the town clerk, which is mandated by the state, had to be done, could have been done out of tax revenue. We did it with CPA funds, part of historic preservation. And I think when that money, the grant or the match at that time is probably 35 percent. So the state took care of 35 percent of it by us using CPA funds rather than general tax revenue. So it can be gravy, but it can be the stuff that just has to be done. The match is by far the most powerful piece in this. And it isn't the 50 percent, it wasn't at the beginning, but as Joe said, 20 percent or 19 percent return on your money in this day and age is pretty darn good.
I understand that the matching is good. I'm hoping that people will get excited about the leveraging, the leveraging of CPA funds to bring in other funds. For instance, Randolph, I believe it was Randolph, put $16,000 of their collected CPA funds, $16,000 of their CPA funds towards a grant application and pulled in 1.5 million dollars on a project to improve their town, which only brought more business to their town. They got back their initial investment of $16,000. So in the end, they spent $0 and got 1.5 million dollars for a project. Do we have money lying around to apply for grants? No. This is, this is a.
But that can be paid for by CPA. The grant writer can be paid by CPA.
CPA is a fund that is separate from the town general fund. It's a separate dedicated account that does not go away every year. It accrues. And we can use that money to, okay, great, we got state matching, that's great. Where we really take off is when we can start to apply to grants. And if you look out this window at what we're sitting in, in this town, the lakes, the spaces, the beauty of this town, it's very hard to imagine that we can't come up with at least half a dozen projects that will draw in outside funds that will strengthen our town and our community. I'm, if we just try this at 1 percent with all the exemptions and see what happens and come back to the table and have another conversation, that's progress. Let's just see what we can do. It's, it's not something that we are mandated to do. It's not something that we can't change our mind on later if we hate it. But if you look around at the 160 communities in Massachusetts that have adopted this program and not one has a complaint and people are doing great things, go on the community coalition database and look at all the projects. They're very happy. So just, let's try it. Let's just try it.
You said not one has a complaint. It seems to me that in the past, I've read somewhere that there have been a couple of towns who have pulled out of CPA. Is that right?
Well, there are, there are towns that had projects that didn't get funded and they didn't like it because they didn't, it didn't meet it.
Okay.
But that, I believe is a different issue. If you, if you're using a CPA and it's working and then everything is going along, great. But there will be people that have projects they want to do that aren't going to fit this and that's going to be unfortunate. Not everything is a CPA project and not everybody's going to get their project approved.
But have there been towns that, you went to town meeting and said, okay, we're out of here?
No. Or there have been towns that have tried to abolish CPA and there are three of them that town meeting approved the abolishment, went to the general election and the attempt to abolish fails. No town in the Commonwealth that has passed CPA has revoked it.
Okay. I thought I had heard a couple of years back that some had backed out. I didn't know, well, what would happen to the CPA funds that had been acquired to that point? And if they had backed out, what were their reasons?
Good question.
The existing funds would still be available to, to be spent. The existing funds would still be available to be spent. No town's abolished so far.
Some have reduced the assessment, though.
Yeah, and, but the point is, I think, the really important point is, I mean, this isn't a commitment forever, and if it, if you did approve this, and for some reason there was a groundswell to get rid of it, there's a mechanism to get rid of it. You're not locked into it.
It's a low investment for a possible high return. What do we have better going on? What, what do we, what do we, what other options do we have that are going to beat this? If somebody else has a better idea. Everybody just wants to try to go to the next level.
Your proposal is for the 1%, which is the lowest.
1%.
But you can go as high as 3.
If you...
Is there a relationship between the percentage you put in and the percentage you get? If you, if you collect 3%, can you get a bigger percentage? Okay.
The match is a little higher for those at 3%.
Only a little higher?
Yeah.
It's higher, but there's, it's very strange, that there's, if there's money left over after the first round, the people, the 3% are eligible for the second round of funding.
Gotcha.
I understand every community shapes this the way that it fits them, because they can, they can use this in many different ways and put the emphasis in different areas. So each community's act might look slightly different than the other. My proposal is to look at the $16,000 application that landed $1.5 million, and just think about that. That's, that's hard, that's hard to argue, you know, that, that's a good idea. In my mind, that's, that makes as much sense as all the fundraisers that I have tried the last couple of years. I would like to be able to raise funds to finish some projects within a reasonable amount of time. I would like to see people finish some projects before they run out of steam and energy. I think we need a boost, and that's why I'm here.
You started with the $28 a year, and it's a cup of coffee a month.
It is such a small investment.
Absolutely, and we used a similar analogy. It is tiny money. One cup of coffee a month, and it will get you millions of dollars. Middleborough gets about $200 from its, $200, $200,000 a year from the taxes, and the rest from the state match interest and that type of thing. So we total, it's a little over 250 a year, it's been averaging. But $1.7 million in actual money that we wouldn't have, that Lakeville gave to Middleborough, because you still have to pay the registry deeds, and we get to get it, so thank you very much. You know, it, it isn't being saved in a pot for Lakeville when they choose to pass CPA. It is being divided between all the communities that have already passed it. But a cup of coffee a month? I think most people don't realize how little money it is, and they're afraid that it is going to be like a 2, 2 and 1/2% increase, the debt exclusions, and it is little money.
I don't know if we have any more questions.
Hi, my name is Zink. The, one of the, the leveraging, Middleborough has a big advantage. They have a housing authority, and it's professional, and it's been around for a long time, and that's where some of the, that's how they could get the big pieces of money, you know, because they were buying expensive things, and that they knew would pay back. We have to think about that, too. We also should have a housing authority.
You know, I am working right now on a 40B project in Lakeville.
Yeah.
So I, I do work with Lakeville a lot. I know you've had a couple of 40B projects here. Kensington Court was, and Sterling Place isn't, La Baron is 40B.
And La Baron's starting up again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that's something that you want to leverage, but Habitat, you know, Habitat of Plymouth County, you're in Plymouth County, you're half and half. You know, so they like to do projects, they've actually come to us to possibly do a project. Haven't figured out what they're going to do yet, but that, the housing component is only one tiny, tiny portion. You know, you were talking about the Randolph, the, one of the projects that we just voted on Monday for the open space, the FEMA project, once we buy all those properties and all the work has been done, and it is open space, fish and wildlife has already said they're going to come in and buy the property, so we don't have to worry about any of it, and we're going to get all the money back that we put in, that we just voted at town meeting, they're going to pay us. So essentially, it's going to be, we put in $100,000 and we're going to get it back, and it, it's going right back into the CPA project.
You, you had to arrange this, though.
That's what...
And you did a lot of work on that.
No, the town planner did this, the conservation...
The town planner is also on the payroll, so we don't have a town planner either.
Do you have a conservation agent?
Part-time.
And our conservation agent probably did the majority of the work on this, because it is fish and wildlife in the nature conservancy. So, you, and the, actually, I think all the open space projects have come from the conservation agent. And she goes out and she does look for grants. We just recently learned that the community preservation funds can be used to write grants. We weren't aware of that, something new. So we are in the process of hiring a consultant, it's out to bid right now, to assist us with that, to possibly just do grant writings for projects that we get, you know, from other town departments, whether it's conservation planning, zoning maybe does a lot of the work, planner might do, or town engineer, or town DPW supervisor, that type of thing. We are a little bit bigger, so we do have, you know, maybe more employees.
You have a lot more employees that can do things.
I, I, from Plimpton's perspective, we do not have a town administrator, we do not have a town planner, we do not have a conservation agent.
All volunteer boards.
All volunteer boards. We built a 125-acre park by raising money privately to build a 600-foot boardwalk across the, across the wetlands. We raised that money by selling planks with names on it at 35 bucks each. We, when we had that beautiful project starting, and knowing I had the best job in town being chair of CPC, I made the mistake of, that we had a couple of selectmen that weren't thrilled with our parks, so I ran for selectman, and that's how we got the, which screwed up my life royally, but that's how we got it done. So I, you know, I, I hear that it could be a drain on paid town resources, but boy, it doesn't have to be.
I wasn't thinking it was a drain, I just didn't, I, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into it, that I wanted to appreciate. I don't think we could do it. I said, I think we could do the work, but, but that's too real.
It takes a lot of work.
The point being, that's one way to do the work, but a tiny town with very few professional resources can certainly do the work. Thank God, thank God, thank God.
For which you can thank us.
Thank you.
We did, actually, we did, actually.
I thank you for thinking that.
Actually, they've been a pretty good neighbor so far, I think.
It's a lot of land.
You know, we were totally blessed that they're at the corner of town, they're right on Route 44. We don't even know they're there, actually. It was just the perfect fit for us. If they were in the middle of town, I think those of us that are...
Different story, different story.
And there's a great plot.
Yeah. About some other projects that are, that are not, I hardly even think of it as a project, it's a, it's a warrant article, but it's just, just some money to have available in case a piece of property comes up for sale, or somebody wants to sell a piece of property, maybe to the town, but, or even give it to the town, but, but you need, you'd have to do an appraisal, you have to do wetlands delineations, title research, all this stuff to satisfy, you know, the town fathers, and make it work. And it's like, geez, there's no money in the town budget, we, you know...
There's never for this.
It's in the CPA funds, it's, it's available there, you know, we, we have that available, and we can move on it, we can, we can take some action and help them along, and it can happen.
Yeah, Lakeville does have a lot of, of land under the Chapter 61 paragraph, 61A, B, and 61 itself, and when, of course, those properties are...
Exactly.
...purchased for something other than their current use, we have no money. We have 121 days, 120 days to...
But the town has the right of first refusal at the red chapter.
And it's just not enough money to, to, to move forward. It's my understanding that if we have CPA, even though we may not have the funds in the bank, we can use the fact that we have CPA to help borrow. And I think you really do need to find a way to make people understand that there's a lot of grant money out there, but people just don't hand you the grant money. You have to give them a share, something in return for that money, and in most cases, it says percent of the project, percent of the cost. And when you're talking about leverage, you have to make sure that people, people understand that that's where the million point three or whatever comes from, and it's because you have funds to, to use as, as a part of the project. It's not just, they're not just handing you your money and you're going to go away and do what you want. You've got to have, you've got to have some skin in it, I guess.
It's still work. I think passing, passing it, having it accepted for Plimpton was the easy part, you know, and then the work begins, you know, because you sit on the boards and you have to do it, but it's, yeah.
I, I appreciate and I respect how much time and energy that this takes and how much work it is, but I do think it's much more work not to do it this way. It's to do it without CPA, not to have these funds or these opportunities. Getting the job done is much more work, if not impossible. It's like fishing without bait. You can't catch a fish unless you spend 20 cents on the bait, then you get the fish that will feed everybody. And we need, we can't just keep expecting that we're going to catch fish without bait. We want to build a stronger town, we want to build a nicer community and improve our life here. It would be great to have a way to attract outside money, and I just think this is such a great boom, boost, we should try it. But so, while it is work, at least it's rewarding, you're getting somewhere, you're making huge progress, and for all the effort, the time and energy that you do put in, from my perspective, it looks back, it looks to me like you're getting so much back on your investment, not just time, not just money, I mean, but also your time and your energy, you're getting back, it seems, so much.
In real tangible results, in really cool things, open space preservation, historic preservation, community housing. I, if you get, go into work on this, you drive around town and you see the results of your labor, one thing after another, that is preserving community.
That's great, thank you. I think we probably need to end, wrap it up, because the library's going to close soon. So again, this is Rick Burnett from Plimpton, Mark Russo from Plimpton, and Joe Rithwitz from Middleborough, all with a CPA, all reachable through the Community Preservation Coalition or Lakeville. I'm Sarah Kulikovich, and we have a sign-up sheet circulating here, which is also on the library bulletin board, which anybody can come in and sign and look for it on, on the town meeting information. There'll be more coming. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Lake Cam, for covering this event and allowing the people of Lakeville to share in this as well. Thank you.